Meeting to order. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Can I have a motion?
Ms. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, move that Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do we have a second? Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Please vote.
You'll be all right.
Move.
Yes, two absent. Motion passed.
Excellent, very good. Moving on to the motion to enter closed session. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code, Sections 2.2-3711, that the school board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss and consider the assignment, appointment, performance, displining, and resignation of specific employees, appointees, or officers to our school board under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters and actual probable litigation under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A7 and 8. And three, to consult with staff and discuss the qualifications of the candidates for the student representative to our school board under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 2.
I second.
Second by Ms. Ralston. Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is six yes, two absent. Motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return open session approximately one hour. The Prince William County School Board will now enter, or I'm sorry, will now, is now returning to open session from closed session. There are no closed session action items, I don't think.
Correct.
Correct. And so we will be moving to 8.01, the adoption of the closed session consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the school board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Ralston.
I second.
Discussion. Please vote.
Vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session certification. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, the closed session of our school board meeting of October 16, 2019, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard and discussed or considered by the board.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Second from Ms. Ralston. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trenum.
I wasn't here for that, so I'm going to abstain.
Excellent, sir. Please vote.
The vote is six yes, two abstentions. Motion passed.
Okay. So next, we will move to our Positively PWCS presentation. I am very proud of the continued efforts we're making to improve the education of our students with disabilities. Tonight's Positively PWCS highlights the work our schools are doing with assistive technology. Superintendent Dr. Walz will introduce our presentation. Dr. Walz, take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. I'm very proud to have Michelle Roper, Dr. Roper, Director of Special Education here tonight, to provide you with an update on assistive technology within our school division. She's also joined, as you can see up there, by her tremendous staff, who are out there working with our students every day. They work very, very hard to give every student a voice. Dr. Roper.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board members, and Dr. Walz. This evening is an excellent opportunity to share the positive things that are going on in Prince William County schools with assistive technology. As you can see from our T-shirts, we believe that everyone deserves a voice. Standing with me, I have just some of the dedicated staff members in Prince William County who are carrying out this message every day. Lauren Fenner is a special education teacher at Swans Creek, and Debbie McGill, who's right here, is a special education teacher at Fitzgerald Elementary. And they utilize a variety of assistive technology to ensure their students have the tools they need to be successful. I personally have seen the impact that these two teachers have had in giving their students a voice, and we are grateful to have them here along with the strong leadership teams that support them. In a moment, we will hear from both of these schools, and we'll see a video of the innovative ways in which they are using assistive technology in their classroom. Also standing with me, I have our Augmented and Alternative Communication Team, AAC Team for short, who last year completed over 200 school visits to review specific student needs. This team has also led in the training of hundreds of Prince William County staff. Earlier this year, this team received a visit by Dr. Walz and Mrs. Heebner, and the team had an opportunity to share many of the devices that our students use, examples of which are laid in front of each of you. If we could imagine for a minute what it would be like to have limited ways to communicate with others, and then envision how important these devices can be in empowering our students to communicate with us. We are clearly passionate about meeting the needs of our students in this area, and I am grateful to this team and all of Prince William County staff, parents, and community members, who share the responsibility in ensuring that all of our students have a voice. I would also like to take this moment to recognize October as Dyslexia Awareness Month. We are committed to meeting the needs of our learners and tailoring instruction based on students' individual needs. In the past two years, Prince William County Office of Special Education has provided training to over 1,500 teachers in explicit reading instruction in order to support students who struggle in reading, spelling, and comprehension. We remain steadfast in our efforts to ensure our teachers have the tools they need to support our students with dyslexia, and are partnering with colleagues in student learning, like Elizabeth Davis, our dyslexia coordinator, to continue to move us forward. Lastly, a tremendous thank you to our board members and Dr. Walz for the support you agree to in the current budget and future budgets, which will enable us to continue to meet the growing needs of our students with disabilities in the area of assistive technology. As a small token of appreciation, and given that this is AAC and Dyslexia Awareness Month, we have a shirt and bracelet for each of you to help us share the message that all students in Prince William County schools have a voice. Now please welcome Lauren Fenner and Debbie McGill as they share their experiences with assistive technology. Assistive technology makes a difference for my students by giving them a voice in their own learning. AT allows my students with communication delays the freedom over their choices and opinions, and a way to advocate for themselves instead of being dependent on others to know what they want, think, and feel. It's also a teaching tool to use for students with limited language to be able to communicate their ideas, teach vocabulary, and respond to academic content. Having access to AT for my students has allowed me to give students a way to communicate their wants and needs, participate in large and small group settings, and to show more independence within their school environment. Building on what Lauren said, it would really be impossible for us to measure the impact that AT has had on our students throughout the years and throughout their school experiences. To witness the joy of true authentic communication is what continues to drive our passion. There's a lot of catchphrases related to AT out there, when you know better, do better, inspire, not require, always pursue the highest potential of each of your students, and believe that they have something that they truly want to be able to share with you. So we strive for purposeful, yet fun and engaging activities. We're never about drilling our mastery, but about truly allowing that student to utilize a voice, just not in a traditional manner. Thank you both so much. Now we're going to roll tape, so you can watch a little clip of what it's like in these classrooms. Excellent job. Yes, good job. Good. That was hard. I think we're going to take a picture. Take a picture?
I can do it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Dr. Walz, is there something over there? Do you want to tell us about what's over there, or Dr. Roper? I'm sorry, I didn't.
I'd love to.
Yeah.
So we have a device in front of each of you with the instructions and how to use it. And then over there, we have some eye gaze devices and devices that read aloud for students with dyslexia, as well as some cause and effects devices to help students learn that when they do something, there's an action. You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wilk?
I just want to thank everyone for being here. I was actually, over the last four years, we've been using assistive technology, ranging from the basic form of using the Velcro books and the pictures and stuff like that, to upgrading to the actual tablet itself. It's amazing what technology has done. My family's been fortunate that we've been able to get this through Medicaid and support with that, because these are very expensive tools. And I often hear from parents, you know, we wish we could do more, get more of these with our system. And I think what I would say to people is, we are trying, as we've seen, we've, as a school system, have invested in these resources, and it is critical. It is, you know, for nonverbal students, whether it's on the autism spectrum somewhere, having the lack of communication is a huge barrier to growth and success. And so I'm committed, and I think this board and this school system continues to remain committed to expanding these opportunities for these students. And they're amazing, and what we've seen just with my own son in the last couple of years, and the advancement in his growth, it's amazing. Also, Swans Creek is here, which is a school in my district, to go into these buildings and watch these kids use these devices. So thank you all for being here tonight. This is a very important topic for me.
Ms. Jessie.
I also wanted to thank you for the presentation. I was at Antietam, I think it was last year, and Denise and I were there, and they have several devices in their school. And I have a personal friend who has a grandchild who really needed a very expensive item, and we were able to do that. So I want to thank you, and I love your T-shirts, by the way. Thank you.
You can wear yours with us.
Ms. Williams.
I just wanted to say thank you, because this also is very near and dear to my heart, and I think this technology is amazing, and I know there's more coming out, but the time and energy and love that you spend working with these children is absolutely fantastic. And to Ms. Roper, every school I went to for back-to-school night, they just completed the sentence with, "Ms. Roper was just here." And, you know, special education is almost like its own world, and to see you in the schools and the appreciation from the staff that you take time out to really work with everyone, to be trained, to make sure people have what they need to do their jobs, is absolutely fantastic. I hear so much more positive things with each passing year. Just spent another, a morning running, excuse me, commuting with a woman whose daughter goes to Kilby who's dyslexic, and she was talking about all the services that she's getting for her daughter, and how nice it is that the school's recognized it, and now she, as a parent, knows what to do to help her daughter. And I think that's also another component to that puzzle piece. And I just wanted to say thank you to you, to everybody in special education. It's so much appreciated, and again, it's very near and dear to my heart, and I love, love your T-shirts, because that's like my thing. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Ms. Ralston.
Thank you. I want to thank you very much. You did something special in my heart and in my space. You know, I always tell kids, here's my space. My grandson, he's my god-grandson, and when I first came on board, the way you were operating was different from what I had seen before. So one day, my goddaughter called me and said, "Listen, I don't know what to do to help him." I'm going, okay. I said, "But I tell you what, hold on, let me call the school district." I called the school district here, and whoever I spoke with gave a whole rendition of things that we could do to help him by telling the teacher and all the rest of the people. So I said, "Okay, but let me tell you, sometimes places aren't as happy as they should be with good news." So it became a big thing that I was talking about, and it was happening in Virginia. So finally, my grandson goes up in front of a TV, and he can tell you what it is. I thank you so very much, and you're sweet in my heart.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Wonderful. I would like to call this meeting the Prince William County School Board to order. Pastor John Clements of the One Word Community Church in Woodbridge will give the invocation at the request of William Deutsch of the Coles District. Mr. Clements, can you approach the mic? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and board members, it's an honor. Pleasure to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to cover you all in prayer as you go forth in these meetings. Would you all stand with me for a word of prayer, please? Father, tonight, we count it an honor and a privilege to be able to bring our requests before you, to present our cases before you. And so tonight, we ask for wisdom. We ask for understanding in everything that is said and done. We ask that you would be glorified in the midst of this meeting. I pray, Father, that ears and eyes would be open, that our understanding would be enlightened. Then I pray, Father, that we would be able to make the right decisions regarding the children, regarding education, and regarding those things that you have for this particular district and for this school board district. So we give you glory. We give you honor. We count this, this year, Lord, as a year of success for our students, for our teachers. We cover them with prayer. Father, we thank you that there shall be safety with them, and we thank you that they shall come to no hurt, harm, nor danger this year, in Jesus' name. Amen. Would you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Would you like to lead that?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, next, we'll move on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams of the Woodbridge District.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk, Potomac District.
I move that the school board, our Prince William County School Board, approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to give it to Ms. Ralston of the Neabisco District.
I second.
Any discussion? Mr. Deutsch of the Coles District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked Keith Emon if he could speak. Just wanted to, we're appointing a whole bunch of people to the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity. It's kind of a new thing, and just wondered if he could just come forward and just explain what this council is, what we're, what we're doing.
So we'll defer that to Dr. Walz, and he can answer the question.
Mr. Emon, do you have a couple remarks for us? Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chairman Wilk, members of the board, and Dr. Walz. Yep, I'm happy to provide a little bit of information for the public. As the school board was initially informed last spring, Dr. Walz is launching our Superintendent's Equity Advisory Council. Under Dr. Walz's leadership, PWCS has long been committed to fulfilling our mission statement of providing a world-class education. The purpose of this new advisory council is to identify exemplary division practices and review division-wide data, resource distribution, and educational opportunities and access, all while advocating for practices that result in increased student achievement with the goal that all students achieve our vision, that every graduate be career and college-ready and prepared to compete in the 21st century global community. At the quarterly meetings, the council will review data, identify potential priorities, and make recommendations. An update from the council will be provided to the board this spring to inform you of the plans and priorities for the 2020-21 school year.
Thank you. Ms. Jessie.
I noticed that you're, you have a proposed Equity Council members. Does that mean it's proposed that other additional individuals will be added? And I've noticed that there's a lack of regular teachers on this advisory council, and also representatives from the board. So will this be something that we can discuss later?
Ours are separate.
No, 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 I'm talking about his representative for the superintendent's board. I have my representative for the equity. I'm speaking of your Equity Council. Can we discuss this later?
I mean, we can certainly look at the representation to make sure that we have plenty of teachers representing the district. Now, on the Superintendent's Advisory Councils, we don't have board members on those.
Okay. When, how will the board?
It would come to the board, and any recommendations that would affect the budget or any of that, as would the report.
Well, I'm on the Challenging Schools Committee for the Virginia Board of Education, School Board Association, and I've been doing this work for quite some time, and in most instances, there's some way for board members to be represented. I would like to have a discussion with you later about that.
Okay. Well, certainly, board members are welcome to any of those meetings, and correct.
I would like to.
And Dr. Walz, there's, and there'll be a period for input from people who are in attendance at the front end of the meeting, so there's always that opportunity.
I would like to have a discussion with him later, right? Thank you.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we're on the topic, I do want to thank my appointee, Pastor Juan Hernandez, for agreeing to represent the Gainesville District on this new council. My comment is directed toward the Northern Virginia Community College Dual Enrollment Agreement, number 1408. I am always thrilled to see dual enrollment classes added, and we've got a long list of classes. We've got a great cooperation memorandum of understanding with Northern Virginia Community College, and we're providing opportunities for students at many of our schools for dual enrollment, and I'm very excited about that. I remember soon after I got on the board, I had a conversation with Mr. Mulgrew after I'd been to a presentation at the National School Board Conference, and there was another county in Virginia who was graduating students with an associate's degree. And I am so excited that we are doing that now in Prince William County schools, and want to thank all of you so much for your hard work on this. I do have one comment, and I know I've gotten answers on this before, but it still keeps coming up with parents. There is still concern that with dual enrollment classes and degreed programs, that students are only getting .5 of weighted credit as opposed to one weighted credit for AP, and there's still concern that that's just not right, when you're, it's college class, college class, so to speak. So anyway, just wanted to put that out there. But thank you all so much for working hard to get us this agreement with Northern Virginia Community College. I know it's taken a tremendous amount of work, and I thank you all for that.
Allison, those are good points, and I would, I think we'll, we can ask that question, and I'd love to hear the answer on that, the .5 and the one as well. Ms. Williams.
I had a few questions, but I wanted to start to piggyback on Ms. Satterwhite's comments. Is there something different between this dual enrollment agreement and what we've been doing already with our students who have been enrolled in NOVA for classes? Because I know this is not brand-new. Was there something that we, so it's a continuation of what we've been doing? Okay. Because it, the way it was referenced, I thought maybe there was something new, and I know from working with Mr. Mulgrew that some of the classes were changed last year so that they were getting that full credit at one point. But I'm happy that we're continuing.
Dr. Walz, are they getting one full credit at any part of this?
I think it depends on the class.
It does depend on the class.
So there are dual enrollments with one extra point, not just the .5?
Yeah. Because Lee was, my son had a dual enrollment credit for English. He got the full point.
Great.
I think like history, sometimes it's .5 because of the way the class is designed from a college level. I love it, so that's probably why I'm a little bit more knowledgeable. But I also wanted to bring attention to School Psychology Awareness Week, and just take the opportunity to thank all of our school psychologists, as well as my appointees for the Gifted Advisory Council and for the Equity, the Equity Council. I'm really excited that we're rolling this out as a school division. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to move in a direction of equity for all of our students and staff. So I just wanted to say thank you very much to Dr. Walz for rolling out this program and all of your staff. I know there's a lot of work on the back end to get us where we are now, and I'm excited to see how this works out for us division-wide.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? Okay, please vote.
Vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Urban, Deputy Clerk. Clerk, sorry, 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 sorry. Thank you for that correction. Excellent. Okay. I was looking at Deputy Superintendent number 16 when I saw that. All right, we will move on to citizen comments on the agenda and non-agenda items. It looks like we have about nine or 10, eight or nine here, nine folks. And you can all come up to the front and grab a seat. You will each have three minutes to speak, and the clerk will keep the time. The lights on the monitor will indicate your progress. The yellow light will signify that you should sum up your position. Red indicates your time is up, and you should stop. Please use proper decor manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. Please give your name, address for the record when you approach the podium. Our first speaker is Vanessa Olson.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Olson, and my address is on file. The topic I would like to discuss is advisory councils. Over the last 15-plus years, I've had children in Prince William County schools. I've been fortunate enough to serve on school advisory councils at every school level and on the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Instruction, where I am currently serving as secretary. This Council on Instruction has parent representatives from every school in the division. Over these years, I have learned of some of the many wonderful things that are going on throughout the division. We hear about and discuss amazing programs and teachers and the impacts they are making. Our students are fortunate in so many ways to be in Prince William County schools. Of course, with an organization of this size, especially one that seeks to serve the educational needs of so many, there are also areas in need of growth and improvement. We discuss those at length as well. At the end of every year, we generate a report which highlights both areas of commendation and areas of growth. I would like to thank this board and Dr. Walz for the support of these advisory councils and the opportunities that they provide for parents to learn about programs and practices within the division and to have a voice in the process. It might be at the local school level, at the principal's advisory council, where there's the opportunity to contribute to the formation and monitoring of the school plan, and the chance to really get to know the administrative team, or on one of the many, many division-level advisory councils, such as the Superintendent's Advisory Council Instruction, where our concerns are heard year after year and taken seriously. The report we generate is studied, and action items are drawn from it. Dr. Walz himself spends hours with the representatives from our council going through the report line by line. I have been fortunate enough to have sat in on this meeting, and I can assure you, careful consideration is given to the topics we address in the report. We have added a strong voice to the discussion on topics such as mental health, homework, grading, the strategic plan, and even substitute teachers. I am currently working on compiling a report examining the topics we have covered in previous annual reports and any results I can identify from these discussions. Yes, sometimes the answer to our request is no. Other times is, we wish we could, but the budget doesn't allow for it. Other times, we learn that what we want is already happening, we just weren't aware of it. Most of the time, however, our voice plays a major role in the discussions held at every level. So thank you. Thank you for listening to the parents and inviting us to have a seat at the table and to be a part of the process. And I would like to publicly thank the many parents who take the time out of their schedules and...
At the end of every year, we generate a report which highlights both areas of commendation and areas of growth. I would like to thank this board and Dr. Waltz for the support of these advisory councils and the opportunities that they provide for parents to learn about programs and practices within the division and to have a voice in the process. It might be at the local school level, at the principal's advisory council, where there's the opportunity to contribute to the formation and monitoring of the school plan and the chance to really get to know the administrative team, or on one of the many, many division-level advisory councils, such as the superintendent's advisory council instruction, where our concerns are heard year after year and taken seriously. The report we generate is studied and action items are drawn from it. Dr. Waltz himself spends hours with the representatives from our council going through the report line by line. I have been fortunate enough to have sat in on this meeting, and I can assure you, careful consideration is given to the topics we address in the report. We have added a strong voice to the discussion on topics such as mental health, homework, grading, the strategic plan, and even substitute teachers. I am currently working on compiling a report examining the topics we have covered in previous annual reports and any results I can identify from these discussions. Yes, sometimes the answer to our request is no. Other times is we wish we could, but the budget doesn't allow for it. Other times, we learn that what we want is already happening, we just weren't aware of it. Most of the time, however, our voice plays a major role in the discussions held at every level. So thank you. Thank you for listening to the parents and inviting us to have a seat at the table and to be a part of the process. And I would like to publicly thank the many parents who take the time out of their schedules to serve on these councils. I look forward to the next 14 years and continuing to be a partner in my children's education. Thank you.
Excellent. Tiziana Botino?
Good evening, board members. My name is Tiziana Botino, and I'm a community leader and, above all, a mother of two small children, like there, who are my entire world. I want to first thank you, Mrs. Jessie and Mrs. Satterwhite, for responding to our invitation to the tour of Virginia's first net-zero school, Discovery Elementary. And thank you for your genuine curiosity into wanting to learn more about fossil-free schools. To those of you who haven't responded and are interested, I'd like to remind you that this invitation to tour Discovery Elementary in October 25th at 10:30 a.m. is extended to you, and we'd love if you could join us. I certainly appreciate that you listened to us during the last meeting two weeks ago, but it seemed like it had the opposite unintended effect. When we testified two weeks ago, your website stated the following: "One of our goals is for PWCS to become carbon neutral. Thus, total emissions would have to be at net zero." After our testimony in favor of your very own goal, it appears you backtracked. And now, that very same page states, "One of our goals is for PWCS to reduce its overall carbon footprint." The website now lists switching to LED bulbs as having a huge impact on the environment and bills. And while that might be true to an extent, it's far too little to make a real dent on our emissions. While other local government like Arlington and Fairfax are pushing the limits by setting ambitious goals of 100% clean energy within a decade, we are backpedaling and intentionally underachieving. I ask that you revert the language on your website to its previous goal of net zero and aim at achieving net zero speedily. On your downgraded webpage, you now state, while, quote, sorry, "While achieving carbon neutrality for a large school division is possible, it will be a complex, prolonged process." And I beg to differ, or actually, Mr. Knox of VMDO Architects, which designed Discovery Elementary in Arlington, begs to differ. He says, quote, "There is no reason that we can't use public schools' construction anywhere in this country," including here, that's my addition, "to advance zero energy. Cost certainly is not the reason," end quote. A matter of fact, in Arlington Elementary School, energy cost intensity is on average between $1 and $1.20 per square foot per year, while Discovery Elementary is, cost is 11 cents. Internationally, Discovery is one of the largest buildings of any kind anywhere in the world to receive net zero certification. I'm not going to go through the rest because I'm running out of time, but I want to close saying, I just want to strongly encouraging you to aim much, much higher than what you currently are. It's not the technology or the cost that is stopping us, but the political will alone. Thank you so much for your time.
Darnell Pogue?
Good evening, members of the board, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Darnell Pogue. I live in Woodbridge, and I'm here to stand behind the mothers that have been presenting in support of net-zero schools. I'm a father of two energetic and wonderful small children, and just like any other parent out there, I want the best for them. My four-year-old daughter, Adriana, right here, will commence the long journey through the public school system next year. I am anxious for her future. And as we have seen from the recent climate school strikes, millions of other children feel that same anxiety about their future. There is a lot you can do to reduce toxic greenhouse gas emissions that are harming our planet, but you must act now. This is why us parents and students want you to invest in new school plans for net-zero buildings as soon as possible. Our children deserve the healthiest school environment possible, especially since they are spending most of their childhood in classrooms. Net-zero schools are powered by clean energy such as solar and geothermal, which can significantly improve our children's health. They provide unique learning opportunities for students as they can learn firsthand how energy is produced and observe their class and school energy use in real time. Students will take ownership of their future and acquire a sense of pride in their progressive school. I am also aware that you are in the process of updating our strategic plan for Prince William County public schools. As you think about what you might want to achieve in the next four years and beyond, I urge you to prioritize clean energy and strong, bold, sustainable goals. Recycling and LED bulbs would be great for first steps in the next decade or so, or the past decade, excuse me. But we are at that tipping point and need to make up that time fast. According to the best world scientists, we must take aggressive steps to reach net-zero emissions right now, and net-zero schools are the only way to achieve that within our school system. We are hoping you will take this matter seriously. Our children's future is at stake. My wife and I certainly take this seriously because even today, on our anniversary, we are here to speak to you. Huh, sorry. So please, with everything you have, please take this serious. Please understand our concerns because we believe in you, we believe in this county, and we truly value our children, not just ours, but all the children in this county. Thank you very much.
Joseph Ampuro?
My name is Joseph Ampuro. I am from Beller Elementary School. I am representing the green team from my school to help save energy and stop pollution. We had an Earth Day night last year. I got to teach teachers, parents, and students how to create new items from reusable materials. It was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Malik Allen?
My name is Malik Allen, and I'm a member of the green team. I have been on the green team for the past three years. We are trying to save the earth by recycling glue sticks, paper, markers, plastic bags, plastic bottles, cans, and cardboard. We're reusing bags, water bottles at our school. At our school, we are conserving energy by asking teachers, students, and staff to turn off their smart boards, lights, computers, and anything not used during the day. We're having Save Energy Fridays. On this day, we are only using half the lights in our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich Darius?
Yeah, must be.
Good evening. My address is on file. My name is Rich Davila. Until recently, I was a JV baseball coach at Patriot High School. I'd take a couple minutes of your time to speak to you about Coach Josh Steinberg. I'm not here to bash anybody about how this situation was handled. I'm here for my sons, one of which graduated from Patriot High School this past year, and the other one is an eighth grader at Marshmallow Middle School. I have taught my sons to stand up and be heard when you see an injustice being done, so here I am. Josh is a great educator and coach, as both of my boys will tell you. My oldest took his economics class and loved every minute of a very dry subject. My youngest is coached by Josh on his travel baseball team, and I'm sure some will think that this is the reason that I support Josh, to get better playing time for my boy. I can't honestly tell you that I'm above that, but my boy plays what he earns, and that's why I support Coach Josh. When I heard about Josh's dismissal, my first thought was that both, was of both of my boys and how I was going to explain to them that you can be better than just about everyone in your field, earning multiple Coach of the Year honors, be a credit to your school and community, treat everyone, from parents to umpires and opposing coaches and players, with the utmost respect, and still get fired for such petty things as weeds in a warning track, excuse me, which are players and coaches picked by hand, sometimes by hand, multiple times during the season, and not attending a boosters club meeting. A side note about that meeting, I believe that meeting fell on a night that Coach Josh had a family event having to do with the birth of his first child, and he asked some of his coaches to cover for him. Whenever you have a chance to make things better, and you don't, you're wasting your time on this earth. That's my favorite quote spoken by Hall of Fame player Robert Clemente. I'm not sure if I'm making things better by speaking to you tonight, and there's a pretty good chance that I may have made things worse for my youngest son, who is still hoping to play high school baseball in the area. But I couldn't stand by without being heard. Coach deserved better than what he got. Thank you.
Alice Crow?
My name is Alice Crow. I live in Woodbridge, Virginia. I am an attorney, the mother of two grown children, and will have my first grandchild on or around October 29th. Of course, I'm very excited about that. But I'm also concerned about the future of my children and their children because of the climate crisis. Children all over the globe are in psychological despair because of the inaction of adults on the climate crisis. They are being diagnosed with anxiety, depression, PTSD, phobias, sleep disorders, attachment disorders, and substance abuse. Obviously, this will adversely affect their academic performance and their mental health as adults. Young adults in their early twenties are pledging not to have children because they have no hope for the future. They're starting movements. How sad. Thankfully, Governor Northam has issued an executive order requiring that Virginia shall be 100% clean energy by 2050. The Mothers Out Front Net Zero School Campaign is consistent with this executive order. Recognizing that there will be questions about how to fund such schools, I want to talk about the Power Purchase Agreements, or PPAs. There is a feeding frenzy for solar PPAs around the state. Fairfax County, Loudoun County, Virginia Beach, and Charles City County have requests for proposals on the street for PPAs to provide clean, renewable solar power for their schools. Why the rush? Solar is cheaper than ever. A solar PPA allows a school system to purchase power rather than panels using the same operating funds that they use today to purchase electricity from Dominion Energy. And the solar installer gets a 30% federal tax credit, which means lower and more stable electric bills for the schools. This drops to 26% by 2020. Another reason for the rush is the arbitrary limit in Dominion's service territory of 50 megawatts for systems financed by PPAs. It is anticipated that there will be another 30 megawatts installed by 2020. Solar companies spend a lot of time and marketing dollars to win these contracts, and they will go elsewhere to sell systems before the cap is actually reached. This is not good for school systems who want the cost savings and academic advantages afforded by installing solar. There may be the possibility of expanding this cap, but no guarantee. Therefore, I urge the school board to commit to zero emission schools for Prince William County as quickly as possible. This will give our children a hope for the future and a chance for the earthly inheritance that they deserve. Thank you.
Ricardo Blenday?
Thank you guys for having me. Dr. Latif, Dr. Waltz, Jessie, Fran, Justin, nice to see you. Thank you for having me. Sorry, guys. My name is Ricardo, and I'm a father of two. One of my kids is already in Prince William County, and the other one will be. I am concerned about climate change on behalf of my kids and for their health and even future safety. Why we need fossil-free, net-zero schools in Prince William County. Schools are a unique opportunity to teach children about the energy sources of the future, technology, public health, and most important, it's an opportunity to show children we care about their future. With public education, as almost half of the county budget, over 90 buildings dedicated to it, the school buildings themselves stand as monuments of our values. I strongly urge you to live up to the goal of the school system stated on the website or previously stated, as well as the statewide goal by, set by the governors to go green by 2050. Sorry, if you guys could tell, I'm not the greatest at reading, but I'll try to get through this. You know, this is very dear to my heart. You've heard, you know, Mothers Up Front members here say, talking about, you know, why we need this action, and I want to share some facts. There are, you know, huge financial benefits to transition to clean energy. For example, One X Zero Elementary School in Arlington, Discovery Elementary, which you guys have already heard about, saves $100,000 a year, enough to cover, you know, salaries of two schoolteachers. I know that I'm not going to be able to get through the rest. I'm sorry, guys, I know that. I planned on going through all this, but I do want to add that we will save so much money, you know, in the future with this, and my son has some special needs. I'm very proud of, you know, the presentation about the AT earlier on. Communication devices are very, very important to me as well. My son is nonverbal. And I do believe by going green, we will have enough, you know, money to provide these, you know, accommodations to special needs children that need it. My son went almost four years now without having a communication device sent home, and it's very dear for me. So I think that we will save enough money and, you know, but thank you guys for having me.
Thank you. Chrissy Falls?
Good evening, Dr. Latif, Dr. Waltz, board. I'm here to speak to you about Red Ribbon Week, as I do every year, which officially starts next Wednesday, the 23rd. It is also the day that participating schools across the county will be wearing red for Red Ribbon Week. It's easy for you because you should already be wearing red for Ed. We all have, you all have a red swag bag from our local DEA who has now joined us at the Prevention Alliance of Greater Prince William Coalition. Its contents include educational material, some fun swag, and a flyer for our upcoming event called Above the Influence. That is this Saturday, October 19th, from 3:00 to 7:00 at Harris Pavilion, where you can come and learn about the dangers of being under the influence, primarily for our youth. There will be informational tools there for you to educate yourself and educate others during your part in Red Ribbon Week. I ask that you not only encourage your schools that are not participating, but also your community, and help us send a message about the dangers of drugs and alcohol, which is the theme for this year's Red Ribbon Week. It's simple, and you can almost get all of those messages from your swag bag at our event. During Red Ribbon Week, we should be talking more about juling and vaping, and it has gotten out of control, especially in this county. Each pot of a Juul is equivalent to a pack of cigarettes, and most kids that Juul are up to the equivalent of three packs a day. Nicotine is the number-one most addictive substance, and we see it in the middle schools. These children have now started the process of wiring their brains for addiction. I grew up in the Just Say No era, and it's really that simple. Or, nah, I'm good, just like on my T-shirt. I hope to see your participation beginning next week. Red Ribbon Week should give our children the tools to easily just say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that will conclude citizen comment time. We will move on to 1601, the annual school calendar. This item is on for action. We had the first reading last week. Do I have a motion? Ms. Williams?
I move that the Prince William County School Board approved calendar option A for the 2021 annual school calendar.
Do I have a second? Ms. Jessie?
A second?
Ms. Jessie seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Please vote.
The vote is eight yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 1701, update on stream monitoring at Jenkins Elementary School. Dr. Walts.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Walts. It's my pleasure to introduce, actually to update you on the stream monitoring process. And I also have Mr. John Winley, our Director of Facilities, who will be able to assist at the conclusion of our update, if there's any specific questions that you have. Before I begin, I want to kind of give a disclaimer. Some of the terms that I'm going to use this evening are not terms that you're probably most familiar with, and you'll see words such as SWD, BMP, which are Best Management Practice, stormwater, retention devices, stormwater protection. I'm going to try to use layman terms so that we can, you will best understand this. But at the same time, I do want to start off with, in updating you, as you're aware, at the beginning of the school year, there were some concerns that were shared with the school division about sediment that had potentially run downstream from where we had built Jenkins Elementary to ultimately a pond or a BMP that's within a neighboring subdivision, that's about nine tenths of a mile down from our school site. So with that information, in working through a construction process, we work with the county as far as reviewing our plans before we build. We get approvals on designs, processes that they want us to follow, and in that process, when you conclude the project, you have to go back to the county and have them do reviews and inspections. And when the school opened, we had just concluded the construction of the school, we were right at the point where we needed to work, in this case with the watershed department, with the Environmental Services Division with the county, for them to be able to look at the environmental controls that we had agreed to during the public review process, the PFR process, which many of you are familiar with. And in doing so, we have received updated information as far as what we committed to and what the findings are, as far as did we meet what we had agreed to do. So with that being said... Need to make sure I can click this. Okay, it's not moving. There we go. What I'd like to do is, I have a visual that I can show you today, and I'd like to show you today, but there's some things I need to walk through as far as the commitments that we made with the county, so that we can have it on record to know. And there are multiple commitments that we provide during the PFR process, after which I want to show you an aerial shot that shows our construction site and the stream that's in question, so that you can get a holistic picture of what I'm referring to. Then ultimately, I'm going to talk about the findings that the county came across. So with that, the Best Management Practices, that's a fancy word for a retention pond. Many times, if you go into new communities, shopping centers, you will see that ponds have been developed. These ponds are designed to be able to catch sediment that comes from stormwater runoff and to catch it before it gets into our streams. So we had agreed at the very beginning that we would install a BMP actually on the construction site. In building one on the site, all of the water from the construction would all go to this pond, and it would capture the water and any sediment from the construction before water was ultimately released into a stream. It was a way of us controlling all of the water and keeping it on-site, and in the construction phase, keeping it out of the stream. That's the ultimate goal. We also agree that we would document the existing conditions of the channel at the start of the school construction, and then we would restore any damage that's caused by its construction. And again, that's where the county comes in. They look at our reports, they review it, they do onsite walks, and they determine if it is what it looked like from a pre-observation, and then ultimately, when they're looking at it with a post-observation. The condition of the offsite stream from the proposed stormwater outfall to the confluence, the area of creek that we were responsible for monitoring is the creek that is directly adjacent to the construction. But this stream has close to eight streams that connect to it between our site and the community's BMP that's in question. So we were responsible for the creek that we are directly connected to, but when there are other streams that are not associated with our site, we're not responsible for anything that comes from those other streams. And you will see that in the graphic that I have. We agreed that the stream monitoring would be conducted from the start, once per year during the construction, and that we also agreed to monitor it for two years after. We know that our site is very close to a creek, and in the very beginning, working with our designers in the county, we recognized that the creek was very sensitive, being very close, and we want to ensure that even after we built our school and grass begins to grow and all of the stormwater protection measures are in place, that it is functioning as it's designed. So that's a big agreement that we have committed to for the next two years. We were also required to submit a report to the Environmental Services Division to document all of our monitoring, and if there were any indication of an impairment where something had occurred, we would have to give that to the Environmental Department, show corrective action, and they would have to approve it and say that that was the best course of action before we actually did any corrective measures. Meaning, if you had a large storm and any sediment did get into the creek, and we noted that, we would have to report that to the Environmental Services Division. They would review it, we would give a plan of action to correct it, and they would have to approve it to ensure that we are in accordance with the regulations. And again, here we go. So the findings from our Public Works Division, the Watershed Management Department, is ultimately that the school site is in conformance with the approved plan. That is the information that we received from the county department, that what we agreed to do, and what we monitored, and what information we provide, the county went back and did a field assessment on two occasions, looking at our data, pre- and post-observation information, and concurred that we met the conditions that we had agreed upon. The data also showed that the banks that we were monitoring, the creek banks, they did remain stable. And again, these are quotes directly from the communication with the county, and that there was little indication of degradation, and that the channel had varying degrees of sediment deposited, and the removal is a typical function of a stream. So what I have to explain to you here is, the nature of the streams, streams do change over time as it rains. Streams are not something where it just remains one's shape. So when you have rainfalls, the shape of the creeks do change. The Watershed Department said that they did not see anything that was atypical between the pre- and the post-observation. Now, there were areas where we had to do corrective measures during the construction process for the area that we were responsible for. So this is a validation that we did what we said, and we did it correctly. At the same time, the county watershed department indicated that they are working on a comprehensive plan that may involve stream restoration, pond retrofits, dredging, and other techniques to address the sediment leaving the site. In doing so, and this is where the aerial that I have is going to be very beneficial, what they're talking about is from the length of the creek from where we stopped monitoring to the actual BMP for the adjacent subdivision. And you will see that section. So they acknowledge that beyond our point, there are other factors that they need to look at in developing a long-term plan. There is no question that downstream, over the course of time, there has been sediment that has gotten into a BMP. So it's not a question, did sediment get into it, it's just where did that sediment come from? The county's analysis is that the school division did not contribute to the sediment that's associated with what is in the BMP at the adjacent homeowners group. So I'm going to skip over the summary real quick and go to the aerial, so I can, you can see what I've just discussed. Okay, you have this before you, and this is a very detailed aerial, so I want to walk you through this. And I'm going to start at the bottom left, and I'm going to work my way up to the top right. At the bottom left, you see the yellow lines. That is the boundary for the Jenkins Elementary School site. And you can see this aerial was taken when the school was just beginning its early stages of construction. If you go all the way up to the top right, the blue circle, that is the adjacent communities, they call them a BMP, a Best Management Practice, that's their pond, their retention pond. The first thing that I'd like to say is, when we talk about retention ponds, retention ponds are a maintenance technique that's used to capture sediment that comes from when it rains. The ultimate goal of the BMP is to catch the sediment so that it does not go ultimately into the body of water that is in the watershed for the area that we are in. In this case, it's the Chesapeake Bay ultimately. So BMPs are designed to capture that. So if we go back down to the bottom left, you'll see that there is an orange-yellowish line with red dots. That is the creek that we were responsible for monitoring. And when you look at that, you can readily see, the creek connects to the construction site, it's adjacent to it, that's Chin Park. And there's a huge retaining wall that is right there on the back of the school. In doing so, those red dots are areas where we were required to do cross-sectional surveying, where we actually look at the creek and take visual inspection, take visual pictures, and document, is there any sediment that is changing over time? So those portions, we were responsible for. But as you work your way up from the end of the yellow line on the far right, you see that there is what, you'll see it's labeled as PWC BMP. That is a county-owned BMP, a pond, but it's called a dry pond. It's not wet, except when it rains. When it rains, stops, the water drains, it becomes dry again. It's not a permanent wet pond like you have for the subdivision that's up to the north. If we were to have breached our stream monitoring plan, any sediment that would have come from our site would have reached the county's BWC BMP. That is the catch-all to be able to stop any sediment from going further downstream. So when you follow the stream, the blue line, all the way up to the adjacent subdivision's pond, notice how you see other blue lines connecting? They call that the confluence. They're points where other streams connect to the primary stream, if you want to use that term. We were, again, only responsible for the one stream that came off our site, and the reason why that we're not responsible for anything beyond that, because we can't control what else comes on into the creek from these other adjoining creeks. So what I will tell you is, the BMP that the county owns, as well as the one that is on the community's property, those are probably close to 20 years of age, and they have been in use for many years. So over time, there has been natural sediment that has collected in both of those ponds. And what the county has said is, knowing that those ponds that have been built have collected sediment, they're not able to quantify if we added to it or not. And it's because there's other contributing factors. And, you know, we've talked about Jenkins being under historic rainfall. Just imagine, yes, we had erosion control measures in place for our site, but at the same time, these creeks also experienced tremendous rainfall. And when you have large amounts of water going through natural creeks, you do have natural erosion. Those creeks did change shape as well, and there's sediment that would have added to the creek that ultimately would have gone about nine tenths of a mile downstream to the adjacent community's BMP. So I don't want to go too far in that, because that is not an area that we have been asked to study, but the county watershed department has. So again, I think that the message today is, the county has agreed that what we agreed to, we followed through with it, and that they cannot contribute any of the sediment concerns that are beyond the county's BMP to the school division. So they have acknowledged that there is a lot of work that has to be done on the county side to develop a long-term plan to be able to address the sediment that has been deposited. But it's our opinion that the sediment that's deposited is not only with the adjacent community, it's also with the county's own BMP. Both of those have had substantial amount of sediment over a period of time added to them, and the county has indicated that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Shiroki. Any questions? Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, and thank you very much for this presentation. It definitely helped share some perspective. Just two questions, just for clarification. The pond on-site at the school, is that still in existence, and where is that on the school site?
It is not. There was a temporary pond that was built on the site. We have now converted that pond to an underwater storage system that filters the water before the water then goes into the creek. So part of our monitoring for two years is to ensure that the underground storage facility that we've created, that it is working. So that pond now is a, it's a grass area.
Cool. And then the second question on the bottom of Slide 3, you said that we're going to submit a report to the Prince William County Environmental Services Division documenting findings and monitoring. Is anybody, how are we making sure that that report's accurate? Is there anybody else that kind of double checks that, or are we kind of just self-policing, or how does that work?
Great question. So we, as a facility staffer, not the environmental experts, we contract that out. So we have a company called Wetland Studies that we contract out to maintain and do the monitoring. They actually submitted the report to the county, but the county watershed department takes their report, takes the data, the observations, and then actually does field observations where they validate that what we did is in conformance with what we agreed to, and that what we put on paper is what they see visually.
Ms. Jessie.
First of all, I want to thank you for meeting with me and reviewing some of the terminology and all the acronyms, and also for sharing the map with me earlier this evening. I did meet with the HOA, and I looked at that site, and the sediment in that pond is tremendous, and I think it's perhaps going to become a little bit worse. I want to go back to Slide 3.
Do my best.
Slide 4. Slide 4. So Slide 4 indicates that the school site is in conformance with the approved plan. So the plan that you, we had in place did really work according to them at this point in time. Will there be any review of that? Because I know there's another meeting coming up.
The county has agreed that what we submitted to them in advance, and what they said that we needed to do, it's not a one-way plan. You know, when you submit the plan, they're able to give feedback to say, no, we think you need to do more, or we think you need to do this. So that plan, the county has agreed that we've done what we've committed to. As far as, as the county works to develop the long-term plan for the remaining portion of the stream, our data may be used. I don't want to speak for how the county's going to use that beyond, but I think it would be, what they have indicated to us is, they cannot attribute the concerns that are further downstream to the school division. So our data shows that the amount of sediment that was coming during our monitoring point was reduced over the distance. So in their world, I think they're going to be looking at, how can they help restore the other streams that are tying in, and to be able to either dredge or clean out their BMP, as well as working with the other community? And again, I don't know whose responsibility it is with the other community, if the county has any responsibility there or not, but they've got to work on a plan on how they can minimize and how they can improve that stream, just to minimize the amount of sediment that's going through it.
As I talked to those persons that were concerned, they indicated that this sediment, which is quite comprehensive, to be honest with you, that it was, it happened after the building of Jenkins. Are you saying that perhaps that is coincidental, but that perhaps this, the rain during that period of time may have made this coincidental incident take place? Because that's the only thing that they, at this point, can tie it to. And are they aware of the various, HOA, are they aware of all the streams that you've shown us on the map?
They should be, and they've also been in contact with the Waterstream Watershed Department as well. Our direction would be to the HOA. If they were looking, I logically can see, if you see a change in your pond and you know that there's construction on the other end, one would think that. But given the fact that with the amount of water, the volume of the rainfall, I think you can attribute, and again, I don't want to cross lanes here to the county side, but I think they agree that there was substantial earth movement with those creeks beyond our responsibility that could have- responsibility that could have played a role in this. So the report indicates that we are not, we cannot attribute our monitoring to any damage that occurred. That's what the report says. And that the county has acknowledged that they will need to work on a long-term plan and able to address the issue as a whole. Because it's not just their BMP, there's also the BMP that the county owns, and then everything in between.
Are there any pre-post photographs of this pond prior to the year of beginning the construction at Jenkins?
The county's pond?
Mm-hmm.
That I don't know. I would have to defer to the county. And the HOA would be able to speak with the county. They would be able to provide, what type of maintenance did they provide? And did they have any documentation to show what their BMP? You know, we have BMPs on many of our school sites, and we have a responsibility to maintain those as well. So we end up having to do maintenance and repairs and dredging at times with even some of our own BMPs, as they get older and sediment does get into them over time. I think the county acknowledges that there are some concerns between their BMP and the HOAs. And again, I don't want to keep repeating the same thing, but it's a matter of, they're working on a long-term plan, and they know that there will be multiple strategies that will be implemented to correct it. Again, the finding just says, for schools, the HOA needs to work with the county, and that schools is not attributable to it.
Okay.
I just want to use the language that's in their communication. I want to try not to cross over into getting into something that's the county's domain.
Well, I just want to thank you for, your report is very comprehensive and very thorough. Thank you.
And I will say this, we have made all of this information, to the best of our ability, available to the HOA. We have always told them that, and we will continue to work with the county as they develop their long-term solution, but we have always shared with them everything that we have. So what you're seeing, the information, these reports or emails that I'm referring to, we have actually provided that all to them, so they can review that when they meet with the county as well.
Well, I didn't get the sense that they were trying to point fingers, but they are very concerned, and they should be, for what's happening to that pond.
It is. And they're looking for resolution. They just want to know, how much responsibility do other people have? Because the property, we own some of the property, but then the county owns the remainder of the property along the length of the creek. So they're looking, just, who do they need to talk with to come up with a resolution and able to resolve it?
Ms. Ralston.
Hi, I just want to know, what is the cost to all of this labor that we're looking at? And, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I don't know the scope of the plan of what the county is going to have to implement.
Yeah, but what about us, instead of, you know, let's...
For what we did?
Yeah.
I have to defer to Mr. Winley to see what ultimately, the cost for us would have been what we paid the wetland consultant to monitor.
Okay.
And I don't know if we can give you an exact, or if we can just give you approximation, but we can always get you exact amounts.
I would, I would imagine we'd probably encumbered about $30,000 to $50,000 to wetlands to do the initial, back in 18, 2018, to do the initial monitoring, picture-taking, documentation, put all that into a report, come back out and do monitoring during construction, and then post-monitoring, post-construction monitoring. So, I don't know the exact figure that we've encumbered to them.
Do we look solid as a organization that can take care of this kind of situation? I don't think that you were expecting this much rain, you know, at all. So what, are we prepared for this?
We are. I believe that we had a good plan in place, again, working with the county. Again, this is not a one-way process. This is where the county, because stormwater is a huge, huge, sensitive issue when you do any type of development. And that's why we have rules and regulations within our county that require all developers to work in accordance with those requirements. So I do feel as if we're at a good point. And when it comes to the maintaining of existing, I think that we are staffed appropriately, and we are able to maintain it. Because when you build a BMP, it's not you do it one time, you do have to maintain it. As I was saying earlier, we have had BMPs where we've had, we do have to clean them out. BMPs only have a life of 20, 25 years. So when you reach that point, depending upon the amount of sediment or rainfall, or whatever occurrences have occurred, you do have to clean them out to get them back to the original condition. They do fill up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great, and thank you. Any other questions? So the county will be working on this, right, Ms. Churk?
The latest communication is the county's working on a long-term plan, and I'm sure they do.
I look forward to seeing what the county, you know, comes up with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to superintendent's time.
Thank you, Chairman Latif, and members of the board. In addition to the good news we shared at the last board meeting about our school accreditation, I want to share that the on-time graduation rate in Prince William County schools continues to increase. The 92.4% on-time graduation rate for PWCS surpasses the overall state rate of 91.5% and is higher than the graduation rate in neighboring Fairfax. The 2019 graduation rate marks the 12th consecutive year of improvement, increasing more than nine points since 2008. The on-time graduation rate of African-American, Hispanic, white, and economically disadvantaged students surpasses the state rate. PWCS has the highest graduation rate among school divisions with 100 or more English learners, and students with disabilities in PWCS surpass the state average by two percentage points. This continuous improvement represents the amazing work of our teachers and staff, beginning in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. I congratulate our students and staff on their dedicated work. I am proud to share, yes, thank you. It's very exciting. I'm proud to share that nine of our schools were awarded recognition as Purple Star Schools for being military-friendly schools by demonstrating a major commitment to students and families connected in our nation's military. PWCS now has 12 total schools with the Purple Star designation. The nine schools in PWCS that recently earned the designation are Henderson, Fitzgerald, Patty, Kyle Wilson, and Springwoods Elementary Schools, Benton and Gainesville Middle Schools, and Forest Park and Woodbridge High Schools. The three existing schools include Ashland and Penn Elementary and Porter Traditional. Congratulations to all 12 schools for this prestigious recognition. Thanks to the generosity of our outstanding staff, PWCS is leading the school divisions in Northern Virginia for giving to the United Way. Our annual campaign is currently in progress, and I hope you will consider giving again this year to the United Way to help those who are hungry, homeless, victims of violence, and those who need a helping hand, as well as many other nonprofit organizations. Food Service Director, this is a national magazine, it's considered the go-to magazine for food service in the United States, has named Prince William County Schools the Food Service Operation of the Month. Adam Russo, Director of Food Service and Nutrition Services, and the outstanding food service program are featured in a two-page story in the magazine. Congratulations for serving up success. Last Thursday night, I had the pleasure of presenting at this year's first meeting of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Instruction. The room was packed with new and returning parents. I want to express my appreciation for the tremendous engagement of the parents during the town hall-style question-and-answer session. Thanks for working collaboratively to improve our schools. Yesterday morning, I attended a fantastic celebration at River Oaks Elementary School. The school, in collaboration with Amazon Web Services and Spark, our education foundation, cut the ribbon on the new Think Big Space. Educational activities that take place in this new space are designed to promote career awareness, engineering design, coding, and gamification. The students were very excited about the space, and we had a little fun bringing a cell to life using augmented reality. And I just wanted to say, this is the first school classroom, this big space, of its kind in the world. So again, thanks to Amazon and our sponsorship. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir. Moving on to 19.01, Revision of Policy 124, Student Reps to the School Board, first reading, Ms. Goss.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. Tonight, there's a proposal to update the language in Policy 124, Student Representatives to the School Board. You may remember that on April 24, 2019, the Division Counsel McGowan worked with the school board, and the board approved the waiving of the provisions of Policy 124 relating to the timeline for the selection of the student representative. Based on benchmarking of other school divisions with a successful student representative program, feedback from the former representatives and alternates, as well as overall lessons learned, there's a recommendation to change the process of appointing one student representative, and instead, appoint two representatives who will alternate on a monthly basis. The proposal has, on a monthly basis, one representative sitting at meetings with the school board, and the other leading a newly organized student representative senate for the purpose of obtaining ongoing broad student input on agenda issues before the school board. The student representative senate would be composed of students from each high school that applied for the student representative position. At this time, Mr. Jeff Girvin, Supervisor of History and Social Science, will provide some additional details regarding the proposed changes to Policy 124.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board members, Dr. Walts. So, as Ms. Goss just stated, basically, the recommendation changes are based on exit interviews from the previous student representatives and the alternates, and then also feedback from the Division Selection Committee members from the past, and ourselves with our work with those students. So, we want to make this a more, you know, deep learning experience for the students, and so we're trying to make some changes to the policy that will basically allow for more mentoring of these students, working more closely with these students on public policy, so they can learn how public policy works, and how you build consensus, and things like that. And especially to try to get back to, I think of what the board a couple of years ago, when you first wanted this, you know, great program to be implemented, that the student, the student representatives basically get more student feedback on matters in front of the board, right? So you can hear student input on the matters that you're actually voting on. And so that's what we're trying to help the students to engage more, and we believe the student senate that we're going to try to create from these students will allow for more of that as well. Another reason for the student senate is, the past couple of years, the teachers involved at the local, at each school, at the selection committees, and then the Division Selection committees have had a wonderful time, you know, with, you know, looking through these applications, and then especially the interview process with these students. These teachers always leave, even though it's two full days of interviewing, they start at 8:00, and they don't get done until 3:00. We give them a little bit of time to eat, and use the restroom, and things like that. But other than that, it's pretty much straight through doing interviews. And I do, I've done interviews myself, and I know that can be tiring, you know, doing that all day. They come out of there very, you know, really charged up and excited about all the wonderful students that come before them, and they get to listen to. And so, they have often proposed, like, can we do something more to have more of these students involved in leadership opportunities? So that is really also a driving force behind that idea.
First, I want to say thank you very much for all the work that you've done on this policy, and I absolutely love the idea of the student council. I deeply appreciate and value that our students' voices are being heard. As someone who piloted this idea and went to NSBA and learned about it, I am in love, I think this is one of my favorite accomplishments from being on the board. One of the things I'm going to be doing is sending some recommendations based upon this first policy, because I'm concerned that we're getting a little exclusory in what we're doing. Because it started with the idea that this would be something open and available to every student who wanted to apply. I understand that there are restrictions, and that you have to have some sort of requirements. But what I also understand as a person of color is, history is a sensitive subject. And I think that there's a lot of leaning towards history teachers and social science teachers, which I know through my own research and through my own personal experiences, is not always the favorite class of students of color. And I'd like to see that open broader, and not be so dependent on our history teachers. It's, if you're not learning something that you're in love with, but you have a contribution to be made, maybe you're a music student, or maybe you've done your three years of, you know, you've done, you see your history requirement in order to graduate, and now you don't have a history teacher. I know there's a clause in there for other teachers as available, and I'm not negating the importance of having a history teacher involved, because I think it's, it's an integral part of the process. But what I do know from additional experience of being a mom, is that we graduate a lot of students, just in general, who aren't aware of some of the local, how Roberts-Roosevelt Water Works, they don't really get that opportunity. And I just don't want to see it be another position that's filled with all of our 3.0 students, or all of our students who are determined to go into public policy. I'd like to make students who don't fit that mold, or who would see this application and think it's got to be this type of person, feel welcome in this process as well. That's really important and valuable, to be able to gain a full perspective of our student body, which was the purpose of this. And I'm not being critical, I'm just sort of a reminder as this process. When I look through this and see 2.5, I'm thinking, you know, I would have loved to apply this, I would have never made the cut as a high school student, because I hated some of my classes, so I just didn't do the work. Wasn't that I didn't have a contribution, but I had a 2.0, so I would have never been able to fit this mold. Or if I was a student who's maybe in special education, who's never gotten higher than a 2.5, but maybe is a policy genius, they're not going to apply. And so, I just don't want to miss those kinds of students, and have those opportunities available to them. And again, I'm going to send in my comments on this policy, but I did, I didn't want to say all this to be critical, I just wanted to keep in mind that that's a core foundation to this position. Because we miss a lot of those students when we have these roles that sort of highlight the kids who are going to go on to be future leaders in public policy, and sit on future boards. I want to make sure that we're captioning those students who don't have that confidence, and this is a good opportunity for them to explore something new. Because I think we do that in such other fantastic ways in this school division. I'd like to see that fermented and rooted firmly in this position as well, for our students. And then, just another request, is that as the student senate, or council gets formed, if we could get updates, or maybe sit in a meeting or something like that, just to see the other side of the process? Because they get to see ours, I think it would be really nice for the board to be able to see what they're doing, because I think sometimes as adults, we get in the way of our students and all the genius that they have. So I just would like to add that on. And again, thank you. So it's not a takeaway, just an add-on.
Ms. Ralston.
Thank you. Where I come from, the city and the state, they all have a students, high school students with them. There is some difference, and I guess I'm going to ask you, what is the difference between the students that should work with any of these people, should work with them, versus the ones that you tell them where they need to travel to? You know, maybe it's this side of the room. I know that it's not clear, because it's not real clear with me. So what I'm looking for, just me personally, is to make sure that the students that come before us and take a seat over here with the superintendent, I'm with you. They don't have to be straight A, they don't even have to be straight F. They have to have a desire to want to do it. You know, it sounds crazy, but you've got to, you know, sometimes we're going to have to step, take a step backwards and talk about the kids that we don't talk about. But they need to know that it is perfectly okay to come and stand there and tell us what it is they want. I'm not clear about who we pick. I'm with you. I'm really not clear with that. And I don't really know exactly how it's done, so if you, are you the picker?
No, I'm not, no.
You're not the picker?
No.
Okay, well, when you figure out who the picker is, would you tell them to call me? You want to say that?
Dr. Walts.
If we could just provide to the board...
If we could just provide to the board the actual written regulation that lays out exactly how the student is selected? Great.
That makes sense to me. Thank you very much.
So, just like with anything else, this is the first reading, so offer your amendments, revisions to the policy over the next couple of weeks, get them to me or Mary, and we'll get them in there. I have one, I'll make one sort of quick statement on, that I am concerned about, and I'll recommend a change, it's on 124, where it says, "Student voiced by sharing ideas and concerns at appropriate times regarding current issues before the board." I would, I'm going to ask that we strike regarding current issues before the board, I think they should be able to speak on what they wish to speak on. So, anyways, that'll be one of the amendments I offer, but I think, Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you. Thank you for y'all's work on this and for bringing this together. Involving more students is always a benefit. Can you walk through how we're going to be selecting members for the Student Senate?
Yes, so, in the process that's laid out right now, basically, students apply, I mean, for the position, it's a blind application process, and once the selection committee at each school selects two students from the pool of students that applied, then they get the names, and at that point, we move forward. So, for basically each school this year had two students who were put forward to interview, of those, the Division Selection Committee was asked to choose one of the students of the two from each school to say which one you felt would be better at doing that position, and so that's where we get the Senate from. So, every school will have a representation based on the, taken from the pool of students who apply.
So, every school will have two members in the Student Senate, assuming more than, or two or more people apply?
I'm sorry, what's that, sir?
So, every school will have two members in the Student Senate, assuming two or more people apply?
They each have one, based on, but it's taken from the pool of two that applied.
Okay, so then the interview panel then is going to select one of the two people from each school to be on the Student Senate?
Correct, and they already did that to be prepared in case the board chose to add that to the policy.
We can, maybe some of the particular standards get adjusted, et cetera, but I think we did have a very thorough discussion around the importance of having some grade standards and other standards for qualifications for people to apply, back when we first approved this policy. You know, I know in life, there have been some things I haven't been able to apply for because of grades, there have been some things I haven't been able to, but having a set of standards for people to apply for is definitely critical as we work through this process.
Okay, Ms. Williams.
Oh, Ms. Jessie.
I have a question. Is there some, a way for us to begin this process earlier so that when we meet at the beginning of the school year, we have a representative, a student representative on the board? Or is that, is that possible?
Well, the reason that we had asked for the waiver last April was because the feedback we were getting from the high schools was that was not a good time for them to be, first of all, we have to have teachers out of the building for a couple of days, students, same thing, getting prepared for exams and things like that, they felt that that was not a good time to do that, begin that process. So, we basically reverted back to what we did the first year, which was start that process, the application process to start at the end of the school year, and then throughout the summer, the schools have time to review those applications and present us with who they selected at the very beginning of the school year, so that we can begin that process. And that's basically why we did it this year, because we were using, taking feedback from the high schools themselves, that they felt the early part of the year was better for the school.
I want to share some thoughts that Ms. Williams made. She did a great deal of legwork on this. We were both very interested in student representation on the board. You know, I've worked with MLK for over 30 years, to be honest with you, we're coming up on the 30th anniversary for Martin Luther King, and the one thing I've learned is that the GPA does not necessarily, is not the full story. There are kids who are verbally gifted, there are kids, when I was at Atomic View as an assistant principal, and I tried, I was putting together a discipline committee, a teacher there said, "I'm going to get you some real kids to be on the discipline committee," because if you put all the straight A kids or the kids who are, did you look at that GPA, there are kids who need a voice, and I'd like for us to really look at that. The other item, at the, you, there's a, in the, in the operation statement, it says that the student will act as a conduit, conduit between the student body and the school board. The thing that I've noticed is that these students go out and they get this information from the school, and they come back and they give a very comprehensive report, and they say, "Students are concerned about this, 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 this." And I'm not sure that they have the right to vote, but I think we need to find a mechanism to respond to when they come back with recommendations. This board, I think, needs to have some way of responding to those recommendations. Otherwise, it's just, you go out, you collect the recommendation, you're on the board, you're heard, but nothing, nothing happens, and maybe that's something on our end that we really need to think about. And also, I want to, I think that your rotations, the rotation idea is a good idea, and I think that that gives both students an opportunity to have a voice on the board. And I also want to thank you for the work that you've done, but I do think we need to relook at the timeline. Thank you.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for all the work that went into updating this, and this is just year three that we're entering, this is all new for us still, we've compiled information from lots of other divisions. You know, the comment on the GPA, it's a GPA of 2.5, which is a C, solid C GPA average, and one of the reasons we did that, and we, I remember we went back and forth and we're all discussing what level to make it at, but we have to remember that these students, first of all, are students, and we want to make sure that they're keeping up with their coursework. We know, we all know how much time it takes to do the work of the school board, and so putting on student school board on top of the list of other activities that the students might list, or the things they're involved in, we want to make sure they keep their grades up, and I think that's really important and should be a top priority. One little comment I wanted to make on page, I'm looking to see, top of the fourth page, there was the last little dot there, right before Section 6, says, "Student representatives and alternative, alternates are introduced at the last school board meeting of the school year, in which they are selected and are seated with the school board for the first meeting of the following year." I sent in an update to Ms. McGowan today, and then I know it's been shared with our staff, it just didn't make it in here, but that statement was not consistent with the rest of the policy, and so that has already been updated, and we'll see that later on. So, I just wanted to mention that. But I'm, I'm very interested in the alternating with two members, I think that's a great idea. I think it gives two members, that, two students that way, the exposure of being able to sit on the board. I like the idea of the Senate, and I appreciate how we're phasing into that with what we already have. I think that was a good plan, so thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, I just wanted to, well, first, I'm never going to change my position on GPA, as someone who graduated from Prince William County Schools with a 1.9 rounded up with a 2.0, so I could gain admission to Mason, I think I did okay, because I'm sitting here now, and I continue to do these things, and I'm exactly that student that would have been excluded, and it wasn't for lack of smarts or ability to get in college, my son just applied to a very prestigious culinary school, and their GPA minimum is 2.0. So, again, I just want to, you know, I'm never going to let go of that, because I know what it is to be that student, and I know there are so many more of them out there, and I know there are so many things that impact your student's GPA and their ability to learn, may be part of it, but it may also be their home condition, it may also be the supplies and resources that they have, it may also be the classes they have, it may be the teacher, it may be their attitude, there's so many things that revolve around a GPA, and it's not indicative of a whole student and who they are. So, I just asked the board to keep that in mind, considering that I was the one that piloted this, and I'm never going to let go of that, because I don't want to miss those students. With the Student Representative Board, I know that schools already have SEAs and things like that, but my question is, is Independence going to get representatives to that board as well? Because there's their school, and I just want to make sure that they're going to be, there's going to be students sitting on there. And then, how are we being reflective or inclusive of our students with special needs? Because they're often left out of this conversation, because they don't fit the requirements, and I want to make sure, because the purpose, again, was to hear from the whole student body, and I fear that with this council, that, you know, our student representatives may not be doing those town halls, because now they have a substitute mechanism in place, and I just want to make sure that we're capturing the entire student body, because that, like I said, that's the reason why I push so hard for this. And I want to make sure that students don't feel excluded, because again, you know, this is the title of the position, having a council, if you don't feel like you fit that, you're not going to speak up. And I just want to make sure that these, the students on the fringes, or the students who don't normally fit those molds, are, feel comfortable coming and speaking their mind and their opinion, and are able to participate and feel like they can participate, because a lot of times, it's, again, it's those students who are already doing leadership, already active in clubs, already having and sharing their voice, that get these positions, those are not the students that I'm looking for, because they're already sharing their voice. So, everything that we can do to facilitate that, and also, I want to be sensitive to our students who are in the lower socioeconomic run, because we don't have good public transportation in this county, we know we have a 40% free and reduced lunch rate, and that affects students' choices. So, I just want to make sure that as we advertise these things, I mean, you can't specifically say, "I'm targeting to this," because you don't want to be on the opposite end of the coin, but that there are some sort of systems or things in place, so that these students feel like it's something that they can do, because a lot of times, you get a student who doesn't have a car, doesn't drive to school, mom and dad don't have a car, and they immediately write this opportunity off, because they think, "Well, how can I do that?" And that defeats the purpose. So, I just want to be, sorry to be so harsh about it, but I think it's important. Thank you.
Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to ask, follow up a question regarding to the Student Representative Senate, which is, I guess, mentioned in the list, but not, we don't really have a section on anything. What is it we expect the Student Representative Senate to do?
They will act as, well, for one thing, that actually, to go to what Ms. Williams said, that's one reason we want to do that as well, they can be ambassadors to the school to help promote this program at the school level, but they are going to be the ones that we're hoping work with the student representatives to gather student input in a much more efficient manner that we've seen in the past. And again, this is based on some of the exit interviews that we've gotten from the alternatives and the representatives, and also from what we've seen ourselves, that some, at least from what the student representatives told us and alternates and other students who applied, actually have continued to apply, they don't feel like they get to have their voice said to the student representatives, because they say, "Nobody's asked us. There's no one at my school that asked me anything about..." So, if I didn't go to the town meeting, or if I didn't do, answer a Google Doc, then my voice was left out. So, what we would like to see is each school has a person that is represented on a board that basically will meet with the student representatives to make sure that they are, in a more efficient way, getting some student input to you all.
So, basically, it's just a, it's, it's a, an advisory board to the student representatives? Is that what it is? I mean, do we have any specific official functions that, that we expect this student Senate thing to do, or I'm just curious?
Yeah, that is the, that's the primary purpose, but we're also, we want to leave that open to that body of students, to kind of, when they get together and meet for the first time, what they feel that they will want to accomplish, but it is mainly an advisory board.
So, they're going to have regular meetings as well as a body?
Yes, with a mentor, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, Mr. Gervin. So, just to point out, you know, Sasan Faraj, who was our rep last year, put together sort of a ad hoc group of, I think it was student council presidents from around the county, from all those high schools, and they put together that All for One Prom last year by getting all student councils involved, and so, one of the things that I had asked him to do is to consider getting a council of councils, or, you know, council presidents, which would be an easy conduit to, to get to the student reps. So, I think the Student Senate's a great idea, it also, it gets more people involved, and I think, you know, as Ms. Jessie pointed out, as they come to us, we have to do a better job, and this has all been an experiment, you know, sort of new to us, but as they bring these concerns to us, you know, we certainly can add their concerns to an agenda item for addressing, that is certainly just like we do with normal constituents. So, anyways, thank you very much, Mr. Gervin, Ms. Goss, always a pleasure, thank you all. We will move on next to the 19.02 endorsement of Board County Supervisors Letter in Legislative Position Restoring Funding for Cost of Competing Adjustments. I put this on at the request of the County Board of Supervisors, who last week voted on a letter that they would like the school board, the chair to sign, but clearly, we should get board buy-in before we sign anything. That should be on item 19.02. I think Mr. Westcott's here, you want to come up, Mr. Westcott, and sort of give us a quick rundown on what the county wants?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. David Westcott, Legislative Affairs Liaison for the County of Prince William. Just wanted to give you all an update, so, in the past two weeks, the Northern Virginia Legislative Liaisons met, and COCA funding and MVTA funding for the upcoming General Assembly session was a major topic in our last meeting. With that being said, other municipalities around the Northern Virginia region are sending a letter to the Governor's Administration that speaks on COCA funding. Now, obviously, the MVTA funding is more directed for Prince William County Board of Supervisors, but tonight, I bring forth a letter that Chairman Stewart is asking for the signature of the chairman here, Prince William County School Board, and what the letter really states is, is that we're asking, and we understand the challenges that the governor faces as he's putting forth this next biennium for the General Assembly, and that we ask that he restore funding for COCA to support positions partnering with us to address education needs within our communities, and that we appreciate his commitment to Prince William County and its schools here in the state of Virginia. So, we ask for the endorsement.
Dr. Walz, is this part of our legislative priority to, to restore COCA?
Yes, it is, and this is something that we have had in the past, and we have fully supported the board and the administration, and I would highly recommend that it be signed.
Okay, I think we can put this on, this is, is this on for action? Okay, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board signed on to the COCA letter as presented.
So, that was Mr. Deutsch of the Coles District. And do I have a second?
I have a second.
And Ms. Williams of Woodbridge seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am very happy to see that Prince William County Board of Supervisors is very interested in this, because this has been a legislative priority of ours for years, I think just about ever since I got on the board, and we still haven't had that funding restored, so I appreciate the Board of County Supervisors getting involved. Thank you.
Mr., anybody else? Okay. Ms. Ralston.
Hi, I just wanted to ask, how soon will money transfer?
Well, this, this will, they'll just give us the, you know, heave-ho one more time. Hopefully not. Ms. Williams.
I just thank the county for this opportunity. I'm wondering, in addition to sending a letter to Mr. Northam, will we be, will the county be sending any letters to our representatives to the General Assembly, where they generally make that decision?
Yes, Member Williams, we also will, as soon as the chairman and the chairman here on the school board sign the letter, the, a copy of those letters will be sent to not only our delegation, also, the letter will also go to the Secretary of Education as well. Thought it would be very important that we send that letter to the secretary as well.
And I, just one question, I just, for my own, I just want to hear you say that you're going to actually go and lobby on behalf of the county for this as well, because we do that. We don't hear very much from the county side.
Absolutely, in our legislative package last year in 2019, that was in our legislative package, and then also this year, in our draft legislative package, this is also a priority of ours as well.
Great, thank you, I think it's important for our public to hear that, that it's on both sides. Thank you.
Please vote. Please convey our thanks to the County Board of Supervisors Chairman Stewart. It's nice to have you come over and ask for things nicely. And you can, you can give the message directly back to them, thank you.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Excellent, we will move on to Board Matters. We will move on to Board Matters. We'll start with Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Dr. Walts has mentioned, River Oaks Elementary School, yesterday, we had the Amazon Worldwide Services with our fabulous, fabulous first Think Big Space. And there were two rooms completely outfitted by Amazon. Amazon's going to be sending technology and supporting for this year as they get it kicked off. Want to thank Mr. Now, want to thank our folks with Spark, Ms. Williams, the principal, and, and also Ms. Robinson, Ms. Cornelia Robinson, Senior Manager of Global Community Engagement for Amazon Web Services. The space was phenomenal. We got to watch students working with the augmented reality, and see their faces when they saw their cell that was flat on paper come to life through the use of the Kindle with that and the, the software. So it was very exciting, and looking forward to seeing what our students will be doing there. Ms. Williams joined us, and she'll talk about that too, the way she joined us. But also, want to make sure to give another shout out for the Above the Influence that's going to be hosted by Y Incorporated, the Harris Pavilion, this Saturday from three to seven. We definitely have some major problems with our students with juuling and substance abuse. And I appreciate everybody who's involved in sponsoring this. And thank you for the goodie bags that you gave us. Also want to thank our folks of Special Education for the bracelets and the shirts we got. One little cool thing about the bracelet, it's heat responsive, so you can read the letters better after you've been wearing it for a while. So, just a note after playing with it. Let's see, and that is it. Want to wish everybody a very good fall season. Lots of our schools are having fall festivals. Make sure to get out and support our schools, support our PTAs, PTOs. They've got some amazing events planned for our kids over the next few weeks, and want to give them all a shout out. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point, an article's actually pointed out to me in Inside Nova from a few days ago, and it was an article about high school football players in Prince William County being able to purchase their own football helmets. And then after the season is, after their career is done, they can keep them. I think this is a, I think it's a good thing. It's not a requirement, and certainly, not everybody takes advantage of it, because we do provide good helmets for our kids. But I think it is nice that we provide our parents that, parents that option. It allows for, you know, for, if the, there's a specific fit that works better, or if they're concerned about some of the safety, you know, safety, and they want the, you know, the latest in safety. It allows parents to, to have that option. I think it's nice that we support that. The article mentions that, it was, that this has been going on for seven years. It started at Patriot High School. And so, actually, there's a lesson here for our students as well, because I was part of that conversation seven years ago, and it wasn't, and it was somewhat of a contentious decision seven years ago. So I'm glad to see we've gotten beyond that. And for all our students, just, the lesson you can take away is, the bureaucracy is not always right. And if you beat hard enough, you can actually bend it a little bit. So. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
Thank you. I'm going to change subjects. I, it is my understanding that our graduation rate, as was announced this year, is 92.4, which is the highest we have ever had, and higher than the school division to the north. So, do we understand what this means? So, Ms., hi. Is it possible that the staff person can come up and explain it?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
No, you can certainly ask and send an email, but we can have a presentation later meeting. This is Board Matters, as we're wrapping up.
Well, this is Board Matters. Is that what you said? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're not, are we, you're asking for a staffer to come up and answer a question right now? I don't think we've ever done that, Diana.
Really?
No, we've never done that.
We, with...
All right, sure, go ahead and ask the question. Dr. Wal, you can ask the question, Dr. Walts.
Dr. Walts, do you, what is it that changed our numbers? What did we do that was so different?
Well, that's a complex question. I guess I would say that, that what we did is we worked with students to improve the ability of them to graduate on time, and more of them to graduate on time. So the more you have graduating on time, the harder that is. And by on time, I mean they have to graduate within four years. So that's a state and a federal measurement. And so, every time we increase, that represents more and more students. When you think of us as having over 91,000 students, every time you improve the graduation rate, that means fewer kids fall through the cracks, or don't graduate, or what have you. So, there are a lot of things we do with professional development, many things that we do with going back and doing reteaching to ensure that students are going to do well, and are going to pass these benchmarks that help them to graduate on time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The only reason I brought that forward again was because when I listen to some of our members here, you know, I think they forget that there were some people who had difficulties other than Ms. Williams. And what you have said today, I think, needs to be said many, many times. Thank you very much.
Ms. Jesse.
I've had an active site visits, had had several visits with just PTOs trying to meet with my schools to get a sense of where they are and what their concerns are, and to talk about various issues. I've met with the PTO at Old Bridge Elementary, very exciting school. As you know, it's a very high-performing school, and as are all of the schools in the Okaquan District, fortunately. And I also met with the Parent Advisory Council for Woodbridge High School. While there, they announced a Purple Star of School status. And that award, apparently, it requires quite a bit of documentation, was, and she gave credit to her assistant principal there, who is Sheila Coleman. Woodbridge High School also had Senior Night, where they recognized all the graduating seniors, not only for the football team, but for the dance team and the cheerleaders. Lake Ridge, I went to Lake Ridge Elementary's, back to, no, Parent Advisory Meeting. And I think if, did I, did my slide show up today? Is it available? I want to, there it is. I walked into that school, and I walked in the parking lot, and I thought, wow, you know who did this? Mural, mural on the wall. And these guys can do anything, and there's, if you go inside the, the, inside the lounge and look at the lounge area, they had all sort of things going on there. And also in the library. And there are just too many photographs to share. I also want to share something that I thought was very unique. The cheerleaders at Woodbridge High School are district champions. And second place is Colgan. So I have another slide, which I think, this is Woodbridge, I think there's another slide. This is the slide that everyone's talking about. Because Woodbridge High School was number one, but they came together with Colgan, because Colgan was number two. And I think these cheerleading squads, I don't know how they do what they do. It looks very dangerous to me, but it's all synchronized. And Dr. Walts, I watched the dance, all the dancing at Colgan High School, and I understand your, your daughter's on that dance team. She's going to be a part of the dancing program there. These kids are doing some wonderful things, and I think that sometimes we get so caught up in the academics that we forget that there are kids who are gifted in other areas. Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I just want to give a shout out to Ms. Ralph on Woodbridge's senior, senior high school's cheerleading team. She is a, I think, third generation now, Prince William County student. Her grandmother sub at Prince William County Schools. And her uncle Rodney Ralph was one of the first representatives at Lake Ridge Middle School. I went to high school with him. So, big news, we have some just exciting events going on in the Woodbridge District this year. And as Dr. Walts alluded to earlier, I am so excited that one of my schools, River Oaks, is pioneering the way in Think Big Space in coordination with Amazon. I think that there's been so much said about that. I can't add very much more accolades, other than to say, the really cool part for me was I FaceTimed in. So I thought that was really interesting, and I've been asking for a few years, and on occasions, I've been able to do that. But I think when we expect high expectations and have high goals for our students in technology, that it's nice to be a board member who's able to do that in reverse. I did it before with Freedom Soul Squad, and still hear from graduates who were so thankful for the opportunity to speak to me via FaceTime. They thought it was really cool. And it was really neat to see our elected officials interact, and our staff interact, with the assisted technology, interactive technology. I had the opportunity to tour the space in person prior to the event. But I think that that's something that all of us as adults can do a little bit more, because the kids are definitely leading the way. And it's a nice thing for us to be able to model back to them. I just wanted to thank the ITC Coordinator, Ms. Kelly Sales. She set it up and did a test call with me on her day off, walked me around, made sure that the camera was focused. I know it makes them a little nervous, because it's like holding a board member in your hands, but she did a fabulous job, and I was able to see everything and participate, and I think that's awesome. Something else I wanted to highlight is there's a young woman there named Adana Hammond, I believe is her last name. And she was interviewed by ABC Seven's news reporter, and that girl took the mic and ran with it. Talk about a future news reporter. It was fabulous, no fear. She just, I mean, she rocked it, and I just have to give her a big shout out, because again, and I say it time and time again, when we as adults step out of the way of our students, because they're awesome, they take the lead and run with it. And she was just stellar. Really quickly to finish up, I just want to give a big shout out to Kilby Elementary. They have the 21st Century Learning Grant there, and Ms. Plum, for short, was able to bring in Captain Barrington Irvine, excuse me, to give a speech in front of the school. He is the first and the youngest black pilot to ever fly around the world in a single-engine plane, which he actually built himself. Very cool, very appropriate for the students. I was a total nerd, geeked out there, and I just think that that's awesome. And thank you, Ms. Plum, for all the work that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Highlights.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who?
Oh.
Mr. Deutsch, sorry.
Rogan, thank you all very much. First of all, just have to congratulate everybody who's excited about last night's win. The Nationals are going to the World Series and making history. And I know as a lifelong Mets fan, the emotion and joy I had in 2015, and I'm sure all across the region, people were excited about something that is a once-in-a-lifetime thing so far. With the way they've built this team, maybe it won't be a once-in-a-lifetime in the future. But congratulations to everybody, it's an exciting time for the city. Looking forward to the Nets winning the World Series. We had a very fun time on Friday over at Colgan for their football game, celebrating homecoming. And they just, they did a beautiful job with the band out on the field, basically being a couple of walls for our homecoming committee. And it was just, it was a beautiful time there, and great time had by all. You know, today is actually a little bit of a bittersweet day. It's four years that we've all been working together, serving together. And we've gotten a lot of good stuff done. You know, just reminded, the presentation today is one more reminder of some of the accomplishments that we've done. You know, working together as a board on that special edit audit, or special education audit, the incredible job that Michelle Roper's done, the incredible job our new attorney's done on the special education front, all the training. There've been significant improvements on that side, combined now with showcasing the technology we've brought on board, we've brought on technology, additional positions. It's been an incredible highlight, and thank you to everybody here who's worked so hard on that. We've done a lot of work to, to improve school safety, whether it's adding additional security officers, increasing our physical security. And we've reduced trailers, we've added schools, we've added additional positions for counselors, social workers, psychologists, a lot of our mental health support staff. There's been so many things we've done together as a board, and, you know, we've, we've had our crazy, we had our ups and downs. There've been a lot of memorable long nights in this board that have definitely been, been memorable. But four, four years is a long time, and it's been, been an honor to serve, and I think we've gotten a lot of good things done.
Now, Mr. Wilk. Sorry about that, Mr. Deutsch, thank you. Mr. Deutsch, we have three more meetings left. Rushing out of here. Highlight a couple of things. The Friday after our last board meeting, so I had the pleasure of visiting Grand Park Middle School, and another one of my visits and rounds in touring classrooms. Later that day, I had the pleasure of attending Forest Park's Homecoming Pep Assembly with Dr. Walts. He was there in attendance, Ms. Gulata, a number of other team members, Dr. Roper, where the unified banner was presented to the Forest Park students, and the awesome program set up by Ms. McCann and her team. That was a cool assembly, very good event. That evening, I went to share my duties of two homecoming events. That evening, I actually went to Potomac High School's homecoming football game to support the Panthers in that event. Smart Beginnings, Tanya Solstice and her team, there was a great event. I was invited to be a speaker at the celebration of the Washington Reed Pre-K Program. This is a program that I pushed, and I was able to get to support of this board for an expansion of 120 additional Pre-K seats in the Potomac District at Washington Reed. Great event, and want to thank Ms. Solstice and her team for that. Had the pleasure last week of filming my board brief, highlighting Forest Park, some of the new technology acquisitions for the IT program, and also giving a preview to the new innovation and program happening with the turf field and the outdoor track. Also that day, was able to visit Grand Park on a very sad day, a very tragic day. Grand Park lost one of their cafeteria workers that morning, and she had grandkids at the school and in Forest Park. So my prayers go out to that family and her, and her longstanding service to our school system, but was able to be there and be at the building that day and talk with staff, wrap things out. That last Friday, I was able to be at the Colgan High School with Dr. Walts and the Forest Park Football Team, which was able to easily dismantle the Colgan Goldfish and their football program. No, not the spirit, they, they definitely had the spirit hands, but not the football team. Finally, Ashland Elementary, I attended Trunk or Treat, which is a great PTO event put on by their program. I was able, my son dressed up as Batman, and I was the Riddler, and that was a great event, and we had a great time. Yes, no, I took the, well, I was gonna, I do not have the blazer. People asked me to wear it tonight, but the Riddler blazer is being retired. But anyways, so thank you all, and looking forward to our meeting in two weeks. Thank you. Outstanding. Well, I want to just echo Ms. Lori Williams' comments on Kilby Elementary. I was invited over there by Principal Najem, and by our school board rep, Lori Williams in the Woodbridge District, to attend a fantastic program. They have a grant over there, a federal grant, that supports an after-school program that goes from September to May. They call the program Tiger, Tiger 21?
It's a 21st Century Learning Grant.
21st Century Learning Grant from the federal government that is available for 180 children every day after school from September to May. And the kids get fed dinner as well, and they do all kinds of STEM plus activities. And we had an opportunity of tour, some of the great activities they do, see some of the projects they're working on, meet some of the students who are involved in that program, and the teachers. It is a fantastic program. It's a, I would, I would consider it a best practice. Fred Lynn and Garfield do it as well. It is exactly the kind of program and exactly the kind of schools that I think will help us achieve higher levels of success across the board, whether be, you know, your grades, or your SAT, your PSAT, is getting more kids in the Governor's School, IB programs, and Cambridge programs. Sparking interest at STEM at that level is exactly what I think we ought to be working on, and I hope to see that program replicated across the division. It is a fantastic program. So that was exciting. Thank you, Mr. Trokey, for the update on the creek. I think that was very important to have this evening. I think there'll be some exciting news that I'm not allowed to share, coming from Dr. Walts and Dr. John Wallingford on some of the VSBAs. Walts and Dr. John Wallingford on some of the VSBA stuff that we're working with, with our bonds. That's exciting, coming up in the next few days, hopefully. And then, what else? Today was the day most of the students, a lot of students took PSATs across the division. I am thrilled with Dr. Walts' commitment to putting together a committee to study SATs and improving our scores. I, I am so impressed with what we've been able to do with graduation rates. I have no doubt we can turn our attention to student success by other metrics, and I'm looking forward to hearing all of that. Seniors, take advantage. Seniors, juniors, all high school students, take advantage of your counseling. I'd like to remind you about our counselors. We did hire 47 new counselors, as Mr. Deutsch pointed out, and I've met with some of our counselors across the division. They're very excited with the extra help they're getting, but I'd ask the students to take advantage of the counseling, take advantage of Naviance, and take advantage of the other opportunities that our school division has that will help you succeed better. Have a wonderful, safe rest of the month, and meeting adjourned.